I'd like to call to order and welcome everybody to the work session for February the 5th of 2024. I have a couple of announcements to make before we get started, and I know that, you know, public comment is supposed to be up. We have three minutes on the public comment. We're welcome to sit around during the middle of it and have discussion. You know, I know we want everybody to have an opportunity to get up and speak, so just wanted to make that. And we have one commissioner that had a blood work this morning, and he will be coming in a few minutes late, so he may walk in at any moment. And I may have to step out for a minute for a family emergency. If I do, Lieutenant Townsend will be taking over a wild walkout for just a second. I'm waiting on a phone call if I had, may have to take it because it's a family ill. Okay. All right. So Ellen, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Michael Shelton.
Mr. Shelton, how you doing this morning?
Good, sir. Thank you.
May I step over to the microphone, please, sir?
Gentlemen, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Michael Shelton. I live in West Athens. I have been made aware that the composition of the Athens-Limestone County Public Library is made up of board members all appointed by the city of Athens. There's nobody there, to my knowledge, that are from the county as a appointee. This is in direct violation of joint documents that direct the five members be composed of three appointed by the city council and two by the county commission. This has been the case at least since 2009. Why has this been allowed and to continue? Additionally, against existing library policy on board appointments, two current board members are serving unlawfully and need to be removed. The chairman is currently in his fourth consecutive term. Another member is in his third consecutive term. Per the posted public policy, no board member may serve more than two consecutive terms. The county of Limestone needs to address this immediately and get the board members back to the 3-2 composition. Furthermore, the library chairman stated in the January 31st 24 library board meeting that applicants that the county commission followed up on last fall were deemed unqualified for the board appointment opening. Multiple candidates applied and were all deemed unsuitable. To my knowledge, no reason was given. The 2022 Code of Alabama Title 11, which covers library boards and its multiple clauses and paragraphs, nowhere provides and defines the standard and qualifications of a library board member, things like education or prior current membership in a particular library group. So what are the qualification requirements to be a board member? I see none in Title 11. In closing, I want to thank the commission for your recent resolution to support libraries and parental rights and Governor Ivey's proposals. That's very nice. Thank you, gentlemen, for doing that. It's great. I strongly urge the Limestone County Commission to resolve the above issues, which is the composition of board and term limits at the earliest possible date and reset the board composition and term limits as required by Joint Resolution of June 18, 2001, and the Athens City Council of June 11, 2001. To my knowledge, all five board members have been appointees by the city only since 2009. Please, gentlemen, reset to the correct composition. I have my contact info on your page. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
Terry Murray.
Terry? How you doing this morning?
All right. How are you?
Doing great.
All right. My name is T.D. Murray. I live on Fennel Road near Belmina, and I want to comment on the proposed quarry in Belmina. Senator Arthur Orr, an attorney, represents Belmina and Mooresville in the state senate. Senator Orr says he believes the Limestone County Commission has the authority to stop the quarry from being built near the Belmina community. He says, quote, "They've got a capability under a local law passed years ago where they can regulate and prevent quarries like this and blasting." The local law, which he wrote, is Alabama Code Section 45-42-260. It authorizes Limestone County Commission to control blasting in the county. There have been other proposals for stopping this quarry. One was involved with Tennessee Valley Research and Extension Center. Senator Orr has referred to Alabama code that defines public schools as grades K through 12. The public school designation for the Extension Center seems to be difficult and not a quick resolution. Other options have been presented as ways to stop the quarry. They are possibilities, but not as straightforward and expedient as the law Senator Orr is recommending the LCC enforce. The first option stated by Senator Orr appears to be the most likely to succeed and the quickest way to succeed. The LCC, Limestone County Commission, must be encouraged to do this. Senator Orr is concerned that once the quarry operator scratches the surface, meaning if they do any work at the quarry site, it will be next to impossible to ever stop the quarry. The quarry operator could scratch the surface the minute the permit is granted by ADM. This might make an appeal meaningless. Stopping the quarry or delaying the permit has to happen now. Other attorneys involved in this situation have been asked about the above danger and possible need for an injunction against ADM to delay or stop the permit process, but none have replied. Senator Orr and Representative Parker Moore are working on a law to better control quarries. This ties with the need for ADM to delay the permit process to give Senator Orr and Representative Moore time to draft and present the bill. Limestone County Chairman Daley stated in a phone conversation that a letter from the county attorney was being sent to ADM requesting the permit decision be delayed until all of the legal questions are resolved. The county attorney will likely need to do something stronger than request a delay by ADM unless ADM responds quickly and agrees to delay the permit decision. Filing an injunction against ADM to delay the process may become necessary. Senator Orr's recommended solution is for the Limestone County Commission to use their legal authority to regulate blasting in the county, especially in the Belmina and Mooresville area. Wow.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. You must have practiced that.
No, I didn't.
All right.
Mallory Murray.
Ms. Murray?
Am I going to get a hook if I go over three minutes?
I would.
Good morning. I'm Mallory Murray. I live on Fennel Road, just outside of Belmina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My family and many others' families have been part of this community for decades. Some historical perspective, Belmina, Mooresville, and Greenbrier have been around since the 1800s. 1826 is generally accepted start date for the town of Belmina. In 1855, they got a train station. In 1878, a post office. In 1865, a church, now the Belmina Methodist Church. Mooresville Incorporated in 1818. The whole town is on the National Register of Historic Places. Greenbrier had their post office established in 1869. These towns and people were here long before the many speculators moving into Limestone County with harmful economic development plans. The Limestone County's commission's stated mission on their official website is to demonstrate good stewardship over financial resources, provide exceptional services to its citizens, promote economic opportunities to enhance the quality of life for its people. A quarry and future asphalt plant in the middle of town will not enhance the quality of life for the people of Belmina and surrounding area, including Mooresville and Greenbrier. Historically, people near quarries suffer property devaluation, property damage, health issues, wells and waterways go dry, and roads are damaged by heavy trucks. The mixed-use economic development that enhances quality of life will steer clear of a rock quarry and asphalt operation. The commission must ensure that any economic development enhances quality of life for its people, not degrade their quality of life. Senator Orr supports the commission's legal authority to control blasting out in the county. He stated in the recent Huntsville lead article, "They've got a capability under a local law passed years ago where they can regulate and prevent quarries like this and blasting." You do have this authority, and the residents want you to prevent this quarry. The commission could issue a policy as soon as possible to deny blasting in a town or within a certain proximity to a town. This would provide exceptional service to its citizens. It was concerning to also read in the lead article that the commission doesn't want to seem spiteful to one company by stopping the quarry. I know that written interviews can sometimes come across differently than intended, and I hope this is the case. Allowing the quarry will not be in line with the stated mission and will wrongly put one company's financial interest ahead of the many longtime residents who will be harmed by the quarry and future asphalt operation in Belmina. I and the other residents who couldn't be here because they have to be at work strongly encourage the commission to uphold their mission statement and make the courageous policy decision to stop this harmful project in the town of Belmina. Always remember, do unto others as you would have them do unto you.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Xerxes Wall.
Hello, Xerxes. How you doing?
Well, how about you?
Doing great.
I would like to comment about the proposal for the NFIP regulations. The issues contained in the FEMA and EDECA documents are complex, and I could talk about any of them for a long time, and yet they are reduced to just bullet points. So there's a necessity, some impreciseness. The proposal will affect all land and all building and development in Limestone County, not just that in a floodplain. It amounts to countywide inspection, certifying, and permitting, if in some cases only to prove you are not working in a special hazard flood area. Building and development is most likely not what you think. It includes grading your driveway or putting up a fence, unless specifically exempted even installing a mailbox or a flagpole. A floodplain is probably not what you think either. In fact, the current SHFA on the map for Limestone County includes parts of the New Bible School and some homes in Kanebreak. In their training videos, EDECA, the Alabama State Agency, working with FEMA on this program, state that every residence in Alabama is in a floodplain of some type. If even a small corner of your building is in a SHFA, the whole building must meet FEMA requirements. Even pre-existing structures can be required to be brought up to current FEMA requirements if they need some types of repairs. This could make your house worthless overnight. This will affect you if you want to do anything on your property anywhere in the county, but if you happen to want to use part of it considered a SHFA, it may very well make you, what you want to do on your own land financially or otherwise, impossible. If put in place, these regulations would require the county engineer to regularly inspect any property in a SHFA for unauthorized development and halt said development. The fines can reach $500 a day plus jail time. Each new day that unauthorized development is in existence is a new infraction. There are private companies that offer flood insurance. Some have said that private insurance is more expensive, but I have not been able to verify if that is true in Limestone County. Our flood risk is lower here than, say, Gulf front property. The NFIP also has shortcomings. For example, the maximum insurance they offer for residential property is $250,000. This would necessitate getting additional flood insurance on property over this value. There are already localities in Alabama not participating in NFIP. Some of them are what would be considered poor locations, but that is usually who we are told need federal subsidies the most. There is a rumor floating around that not participating in NFIP could exclude Limestone County from getting FEMA disaster assistance. As far as I can tell, this is largely untrue. In a FEMA fact sheet, they seem to say it would only affect certain assistance and only in flood zones such as an SHFA. In other words, only property that could have had NFIP insurance. This would not affect, say, tornado assistance at all. Anyone looking for some source material, I would be glad to share it. Please vote no on this proposal and help protect our property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Adam Hutchins.
Adam, how you doing this evening?
I'm doing all right. Thank you. I will talk about the same thing that Xerxes just finished talking about. So I did write all that down for you guys to look through the bullet points, and I won't have time to get through them all. But I do thank the commission for your service to the community, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'd like to express my deep concerns also about the upcoming proposed FEMA/DECA floodplain regulations. From what I know of the proposed regulations thus far, it appears to be another government overreach into the private affairs and rights of our citizens. I would like to, well, I've listed my bullet points for you all, but first, the main point. Our Alabama Constitution states that the purpose of government is to protect the rights of its citizens and enjoyment of life, property, and liberty. Government should never hinder or encumber such rights. If another man or agency can tell us, one of us, what we can and cannot do with our property, is it really ours? Will we, as a county, allow any infringement upon the right to private property? One of the bullet points was the scope of the regulation, which Xerxes addressed. Another was the unreasonableness of the regulation. Again, Xerxes highlighted that. I would like to highlight the expense of the regulation. Not only is the regulation being considered invasive into the property rights of the individual, it would also lay yet another tax burden on the community, as it must be administered and enforced, and this requires funding. Why should we shackle ourselves to yet another government-enforced regulatory requirement? What added benefit to the citizens and the community would justify such an additional tax burden? These are questions that must be asked and answered. The coercive nature of the regulation. It should be equally bothersome how FEMA is pressuring compliance by threatening to not provide flood insurance and possibly hamper loan programs. But where does FEMA attain its funding? If FEMA or any government agency, for that matter, threatens to withhold care from its citizens, who by requirement of the law fund these very agencies, then this is blackmail indeed. Or put another way, if we can't opt out of funding FEMA, then they cannot opt out of providing services for the county. Not only that, but we are overregulated, I believe, as citizens of the U.S. If there's a loophole that needs to be closed in the current regulations, then let's close the loophole. But to me, it doesn't require a 100-page regulatory imposition to fix it. If there's something I've misunderstood or said in ignorance, I would welcome clarity, but I would ask this commission to make every effort to present the final proposal to the people before a final vote. Furthermore, I'd like each of you to understand exactly what you're voting on, to the degree that you can explain it in layman terms to your neighbor. I'll close out my remarks in this way in some encouragement. Jesus said, "A foolish man builds his house on sand, but a wise man builds his house on the rock." How will Limestone County build? Will we build on rock? I understand that some votes that come across your table are not easy ones. However, we do benefit from an endowment. It's the rock on which this nation is built, is the absolute nontransferable, nonnegotiable inherent rights from God, life, liberty, and the pursuit of property. Let this be the rock on which you vote and build. If there's ever any hint of legislation that holds these invaluable truths in even the slightest jeopardy, then we must be stalwart, mustering every ounce of courage, and without flinching, vote to defend them. Gentlemen, fear not the face of man, fear only God. God bless you, gentlemen, and thank you for allowing me to address this commission.
Thank you. I allowed you to finish up because the gentleman's phone was ringing. I knew you'd stop after a moment.
I appreciate that, Mr. Daley. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will take my leave. I need to get to work, but thank you both.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Raven Stovall, Jr.
Thank you.
How you doing, Ms. Stovall?
Good morning. Everybody is so formal. I think all my, everything I had in mind had been addressed, but I didn't hear nobody say anything about the endangered species that was down in the creek there. I didn't really write anything down. I am a, sir?
You're talking about the quarry, right?
Yeah, about the quarry. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't hear nobody say anything about the endangered species, and I was wondering about that, along with the, my main problem is the property value dropping. And I thought we need to kind of address that. You know, it's kind of bad to have a house and stuff, and then you move there, and the next day the value goes down. That's awful. And I didn't have very much to say. I just wanted to address those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stovall.
Kathy Garrett.
Hello, Kathy. How you doing today?
My name is Kathy Garrett, and my husband and I, I'm sorry. My husband and I were born and raised in South Limestone County and live there now. I attended Mooresville Belmina School and Belmina Methodist Church. The majority of the people that live in that, in Belmina, have been there most, if not all, of their lives. This is not just a community. It is our home. Mooresville Road from Greenbrier Parkway to I-565 is in horrible shape, to put it mildly. Gravel trucks illegally travel Garrett Road where they exceed the weight limits for both of the bridges. How much is it going to cost to replace these bridges when they collapse? More trucks of this type are just going to cause the problems to worsen. Mr. Daley has said, quote, "You might could zone and stop one in the future. We just don't think you can zone to stop this one because you would be arbitrarily doing something spiteful against one company," close quote. Spiteful? I don't think anyone here or affected by this quarry is trying to do anything spiteful. This is where we live. It is our home. Mr. Gatlin, can you look your constituents in the eye and tell them honestly that there is nothing you can do? Mr. Townsend, what steps would you take if this was going to be located near your house? Mr. Sammett, how hard would you fight for your community? Mr. Barkstall, why won't you uphold the law already in place? Mr. Daley, one of my best friends lives directly across the street from the proposed site. She has lupus, a pulmonary disease. She loves to sit out on her back porch. Can you assure me that her quality of life and her health will not be affected? Senator Orr, who is an attorney and our state senator, has said that you have the power to stop this quarry. In his words, it is a travesty. Why wouldn't you want to help us? I understand that property owners should have the right to do with their land as they wish, but I also understand that you should consider how this could affect your fellow man. Doing the right thing is not always easy, but in the end, you will be better men for it. You can stop this. Please, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody Gillum.
How you doing, Ms. Gillum?
How you doing, Mr. Daley? It's good to be with you today. I want to show you a picture. Look up here. Look up here. These are all the babies that have attended Belmina Methodist Church in the past. If you are one of those babies, stand up right now. Right here with you, you see people that attended and continue to attend Belmina Methodist Church. Thank you so much. If you are in oppose to this quarry, please stand right now. I want you to see the people that are in oppose to this quarry. And in an article at AL.com, Mr. Daley, please look at me, you said that it would be spiteful to stop this company from coming here. There's an asphalt plant next to Tanner Elementary School. Would you come here, ma'am? Would you come here? Here are some babies that have to breathe the asphalt air at Tanner Elementary School. Look at them. It's spiteful to make them breathe terrible air at their home, too. It's shameful to say it's spiteful against the company. Now, I, as a man of God, implore you to stand up for your fellow man, to do the right thing, to stop this dead in the tracks, and do it for them. Do it for those babies that you just saw. Would you send your babies to an elementary school and breathe asphalt air? You don't have to answer. It's a rhetorical question. I know you wouldn't want that kind of air at your home, too, if they were having to do that. Put your feet in their shoes. And if you would, put your feet in my shoes. I walked the streets of Belmina with signs asking people to come to our meetings, and I almost fell through two floors. These are impoverished people. It's spiteful not to stand up for your people. And I want you to know, the Lord is watching. He's watching all of you. Will you stand up for those of us that are smaller than you? The meek will inherit the earth, not the powerful. Will you stand with us, or will you spitefully allow this quarry to come in? Use the power given to you by the Alabama Constitution to stop this quarry right now. Do it. You have the power. You see Jesus' eyes out here, my friends. When you look into those eyes, you're looking into the eyes of Jesus. When I was poor, did you help me? When they put in a quarry next to my house, did you stop it? These are questions you might have to answer on the last day, my friends. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lucy Glover.
Who did you say was next?
Lucy Glover.
Oh. How you doing this morning, ma'am?
Good, thank you. I'm Lucy Glover from Huntsville, Alabama. I'm speaking on the Poplar Creek topic. I am part owner of Lot 7 in the subdivision. When my family acquired the lot in 1952, it had deed restrictions that were established by the United States government. I was three years old. In these deed restrictions, one of the purposes of the lot is that there be a summer residence, and that means singular residence. This is repeated three times in the deed restrictions. Additionally, as an owner of the lot, I am specifically restricted from constructing or maintaining any building other than a single dwelling and necessary outbuildings. Lot 7 has one house on it despite being four acres in size. Lot 7 has one house on it despite having almost 600 feet of footage. The subdivision regulations were put in place when the subdivision was developed under a common plan or design. Since all owners have purchased property with these restrictions before any one owner could change it, I believe all the owners of the lots should consent because it affects us all. It's up to the county commission to respect the conditions established for the subdivision and not allow the lots to take on different characteristics than was intended in the beginning. I am urging each of you to vote no against the proposed re-subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hayes Brown.
Hello, Mr. Brown. How you doing?
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you. I'm Hayes Brown. I'm owner of Lot 1 in the Poplar Creek subdivision. Remember, this is a re-subdivision. It's not initial subdivision. That means it's a sort of a special case. The subdivision itself was established 71 years ago with 24 lots, specifically 24 lots, with one lot as a common lot pursuant to a common design and scheme. There is one lot that is shared in common by all of them, 1/24. Notice the 24 theme in this subdivision. When the property was subdivided in the first place, there was no homeowners association established, but what was established by the United States government were deed restrictions, not subdivision restrictions necessarily. They look a whole lot like subdivision restrictions. They are much more compelling than that. Subdivision restrictions can be changed by agreement. In this case, it's deed restrictions. And so the rules were set up in the beginning. Now, the owner of Lot 25 is asking you to participate in a violation of the deed restrictions and disregard the common plan and scheme. And my contention is that in 1947, when the first lot was sold, after the government decided to start selling lots, when that first lot was sold and that deed was recorded, these rules apply now to everybody, everybody then and now. It doesn't only apply to the lot that it pertains to. Each owner has an easement, if you will, that some of the language used, a servitude on each other, that we all must observe the same rules. One of those rules, as had been previously stated, was there shall be one house on each lot. Now, you're being asked to violate that rule and allow the lot Now, you're being asked to violate that rule and allow the lot to be subdivided into not two lots, but three lots. There was, there is no, there's no homeowners association to appeal to. There's no planning and zoning process that precedes this. In fact, you're the first entity that's had a chance to look at this. In a real sense, the applicant is addressing the wrong person. Should not be here addressing you. They should be addressing all of the other lot owners and asking them for their permission to modify their deed restrictions. And when they do that and get the common consent of all parties, we can proceed. So, have you been made aware of the deed restrictions? Do you know what I'm talking about? Okay? If you have, I think you'll see very quickly that they apply to everyone. I'm asking, when it comes time for a vote, that if it's Mr. Commissioner Gatlin's authority to make the motion, because it's in District 3, that Mr. Gatlin remain silent, not make a motion to approve. If anyone else approves, any, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Daly, Mr. Barxstall, or Mr. Sammett, if either of you make a motion, similar motion, I'm asking that the rest of you do not second it without a second. If it does get a second, I'm asking the rest of you to vote no. This is not a situation where all in favor, aye; all opposed, silent. Take your time and make the decision slowly when Chairman Daly presents it to you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ethel Shariet.
How you doing today, Ms. Shariet?
Thank you. I'm Ethel Shariet, also an owner of a lot in the Poplar Creek cabin sites. We own Lot Number 6. These lots were developed by TVA after the dam was constructed, which has been many years ago. Lots are unique, they're large, and that's why people are drawn to these lots. They need to stay in this unique preserving environment. There's other subdivisions across the slough from us that they've divided into lots. Their frontage is small, their property values are lower, and we would love to just keep this subdivision the way it was intended, the way the government set it up, the larger lots. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dane Taylor.
How you doing, Mr. Taylor?
How y'all doing?
Doing great.
All right. We're going to keep on the subject of the Poplar Creek subdivision. I am part owner of the Lot 24, right next to the 25 in question. You know, first of all, we don't want a mini subdivision built right next to ours, because I have no idea what the intention of the owner that just bought the property has in mind. These lots, as everybody has already said, there's 25 lots. This is the way this was built. This is the covenants that went into this. There's 20, on the Lot 13 is the one that we all share. So, there's no way to share it, take that one share on 25 and split it three more ways. I mean, it just wouldn't be legally. But the other thing we got, which Mr. Gatlin should be able to testify, is our infrastructure. Them roads, the electricity, the water, that hadn't been touched in over 35 years. We put a little asphalt in the holes every once in a while, but we don't even have cable back there. We don't have internet. None of this is back there. This is just the way it was when it was built. Ms. Maude Turner, that is the one that passed away, y'all probably know her. She did not want her piece of property sold when the house removed or the land divided. How this went about seems to be very unethical, because as we know, as we talked to her, she did not approve of this. So, the other thing is the wildlife, which has been mentioned a couple of times. We have, you know, bald eagles back there now, a set of five of them, mom and daddy and some little babies. We got gophers that run around. We got groundhogs. We got, I mean, this is a natural resource for our wildlife. And as all y'all know, with all these housing developments and all going up, there is no place for the wildlife, which is why we are where we're at. We enjoy the wildlife. We enjoy sitting on our back porch and actually watching this stuff happen. You know, it's, it should have never came to this. It should have never came to this. I was the only one to get a letter, which is by law. So, we let the neighbors know. And as you can see, the neighbors that are turned out, some have emailed because they couldn't, because it was short notice. I got this letter on a Thursday afternoon. I was out of town. And here we are this morning. That really did not give me any time to go in and find information that I needed to bring to you. So, that hit me kind of wrong to begin with. But these houses have been this way since it was installed. And the people there love their privacy, love their wildlife, and yes, we have put up with the infrastructure because of what we have. It makes it just more country for us. We would love to have better stuff, but, you know, when time has it, we'll get it, I'm sure. Just don't let this go through. This was done unethical, and I'm sure if you dig into that, you're going to see that. And please do dig into it. So, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Zach Magnussen.
Morning, Zach. How you doing?
Good morning, Chairman. I'm doing very well. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. You know, it's funny, I think no matter what you're here to talk about, the common thread is the growth and prosperity that we're seeing and the growing pains and the pain that goes along with that. But I'm here today to speak in regards to the proposed subdivision of Lot 25 in the Poplar Creek cabin sites. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother and father. My mother's here with me today, and we are opposed to the subdivision of that piece of property. My parents own Lot Number 23, which is two over from Number 25. It is within sight of our property, and we feel that a subdivision of that into three smaller lots would impact us negatively as well as the other people in our neighborhood. The case has been stated pretty plainly by those that came before me why this should not proceed, so I won't repeat what's already been said. But I will mention that, you know, we only found out about this over the weekend. I think I found out on Saturday, so we've had a short notice to come here and say we're opposed to this. A couple of guys that were not able to be here today that own property in the development with us are Dave Thomas of Lot Number 17 and Garvin Gann of Lot Number 18, and both of those gentlemen have expressed that they, too, are opposed to this measure and authorized me to say so today on their behalf. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Zach.
Robert Reeves.
Hello, Mr. Reeves. How you doing?
I'm well, thank you. I'd like for y'all to take your time and look at these two as a, I'm here to talk about the quarry as well. I don't live in Limestone County, although I might as well, as much as I'm over here. Belmonte, very important, very historic. Most of you know that already, I hope. I could even stand here and tell you how it got its name, but that would delete my time. What I do want to talk about is something I hadn't heard anybody talk about, and that's the danger of radon gas. If you're not familiar with radon gas, you're not paying attention. The state of Alabama, not only them, but let's see if I go through and read all my notes right here. Radon is often referred to as a silent killer because it slips unseen into North Alabama's homes. Did you know that 15 counties in the state of Alabama are the highest rated radon gas in the United States? You're sitting in one of them. The ones we'll talk about today that concerns us is Limestone, Morgan, and Madison County. Belmonte sits right at the corner of all three of those. Limestone County is rated by the, let's see, State of Alabama Environmental Protection Agency as having four PICU limits per liter. What should be is somewhere around 1.3. Four, again, when you start talking about what happens, the Environmental Protection Agency says, if you haven't tested, you're asking to die. Radon is the second most cause of lung cancer in the United States, in fact, in the world. Think about that. It's equivalent, if you have four PICU per liter, to smoking a pack of cigarettes a day, every day. Radon gas is in Limestone and in particular, North Alabama, because of the limestone, because of the caves, and because of the water in many of those caves. Now, I'm going to quote, "From a 2016 study, quarry activities call solar erosion, a river silting leading to subsequent damage of farmlands. The noise and vibrations emanating from quarry activities form micro cracks that eventually become mega cracks with time, leading to landslides, collapse of structures such as dams, buildings, bridges. Quarry activities are well known to cause loss of farmland, environmental quality. It threatens underground and surface water. A 2018 study showed quarries contribute to land degradation, erosion, destruction of forests, farmlands, loss of habitat from some animals and plant species." That's why I'm talking about radon gas. You can't see it, you can't smell it. I guarantee you, it's in your home. If you have not tested, and I'm talking to every one of you here, if you've not tested, you need to test. Morgan County, by the way, if you build a new house there, you have to have a radon eradication. It has to be built in. Madison County hasn't woke up yet. I'm hoping y'all have or will. Radon gas, and I know I'm out of time, radon gas is prevalent, and it will become more prevalent, because as you saw right there, anytime that you start creating fissures with blasting, it's going to let that move further up into the homes or anywhere like that. Please, take advantage of the fact you have the power, according to the law, it's already been quoted to y'all morning, to stop this quarry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Mark Vokel.
How you doing, sir?
Doing good.
You're doing great.
I'm Mark Vokel, and I'm here on the Poplar Creek Division. We definitely stand opposed to this division of Lot 25. If any of y'all ever have been out to Poplar Creek, it's a very unique area. Large lots, seagull residents, that's the way it was designed. It's gone without revision for over 70 years. And then, all of a sudden, they want to take one, divide it into three. It just doesn't make sense. It takes away from the physique of the area. Like I said, we were made aware of this Saturday. Really didn't have enough time to compile a good response to this. Mr. Gatlin was good enough to call me back last night, and we had a good discussion about it. But I ask y'all to vote against this as for us and for the area. It's a beautiful area of the Tennessee River. There's not another one like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vokel.
John and Julia Watkins.
How you doing, Mr. Watkins?
Good. How y'all doing?
Doing great.
Thank you for this opportunity. You know, I'm in the same boat as everybody else. I didn't find out about the Poplar Creek subdivision until Saturday. I'm not one usually, the type to, you know, tell somebody what they can do with their property or to impose restrictions on someone. But my wife and I both, between us, we have properties on both Lots 2 and 7. We have, you know, close to seven acres of land. I mean, basically, you could say we're shooting ourselves in the foot by saying, don't allow this precedence for subdividing our properties out there to exist. We didn't buy this property to subdivide it. I know there's a lot of money in doing that. We bought it to preserve the area. We're restoring a house that was collapsing across the street from us. That's why we bought the second property. And, you know, like everyone else has pointed out, the infrastructure doesn't support the subdivision of all these properties. If you take these 25 properties and subdivide them into one acre plots, you're looking at 75 to 100 houses out there in that area. We have a one-lane road going in all directions. The lane is, I don't know the last time the road was, asphalt was put on the road. We're fortunate enough that they come out every once in a while and throw some asphalt in the holes. But if you have that many more cars running up and down those roads, those roads are going to get deteriorated. We have a lot of water flow out there. Roads will get washed away, and I don't think our water utilities would support more infrastructure out there because of the fact that, I mean, if you were to measure our water pressure now, it's probably at the bare minimum to run sprinkler systems and stuff of that nature, even just for small areas. So, I ask that you guys consider disapproving this. It's just going to put a strain on our infrastructure, and it's also going to set a precedence for other people to start subdividing, because once you break the deed restrictions, then more and more people might come and want to subdivide their property and, you know, take advantage of the situation as well. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Carissa Callen. I had a Melinda Martin.
Melinda Martin?
I don't have anything to do with this. This is something that's hard. I wasn't prepared for this and didn't know about it until last week when we got a registered letter. It's a new subdivision going to be built by Martin Industries, Martin's contract or something. There's four vacant lots that will be turned into lots for sale for homes right next door to our property. And in the years gone by, before my husband passed away, we had to build a icicle-like dam thing out there to keep the water off of us, because the water off of Highway 251 floods down through there. It's about washed away my water meter at this point, and the water comes, just flows. I mean, my driveway is starting to wash away. So, my concern is, the people that's going to build this, are they are going to be able to keep this water off of us? And the property lines are at the point today, we built a little thing, dam, I call it, to keep the water off of us. The lady that actually owned the property showed us where the property line was. Well, when they came out to survey it, it's not actually there. She showed it. So, the property line is going to be right in our driveway now, so we're going to lose part of our driveway. And when that bank is cut down, we're going to be flooded by water. And I don't know if the gentleman's here that bought the property or not, but I would like to know, you know, and I would like to have something done about it if, you know, that's going to happen. And the water that's in behind my house, out of a field, is also flooding. And I have talked to the people more times than one about, you know, doing something about this water. And I'm just getting flooded from every side and every, you know, nobody's willing to help me. I've called down here and talked to several people. Nobody knows anything, says there's nothing I can do. They started farming the land behind me. Actually, I talked to Mr. Sammett about it, you know, and when they started farming the land, they've turned the water, it's washing away my yard. I had to buy a new air unit last year because of it. It's washing, I mean, it's washed away half of my property by my garage down there. So, I need some help on this property and with the subdivision that's coming in. And also, they have got it staked off. The state owns from, I guess, the middle of the highway over to almost where my water meter is, and they have it staked off like they're going to put a driveway there. And there is no way, you know, and I'm not going to move my water meter because it's actually on my property. So, you know, I'd like to get some help on that somehow. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dee Vokel.
How you doing today?
Doing well, thank you. My name's Dee Vokel. I live on Mauder Drive, Track 5, in the Poplar Creek Cabin Site subdivision. And I'm here in support of my neighbors. I, too, object to the deed restriction violation. And I'm here in support of my neighbors, I too object to the deed restriction violation, and to the way the purchase and the minor subdivision of that one Track 25 has been I think my neighbors have covered all the details, and I'm here to ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
George Gregory.
How you doing, Mr. Gregory?
Pretty good, thank you. My name's George Gregory, and I'm here about the Modern Road, Poplar Creek Cabin Site. Those tracks, as been said, were laid out in four acres to be remained as four acres, not to be subdivided. The property's been there for many, many years. The water lines will not support subdivisions of the property, the power lines will not support it, where you get blackouts all the time. If all the properties were supposed to be subdivided, that area would turn into a mess. One thing that's been addressed is the wildlife. The properties were spread out that way not to affect the wildlife in that area. This subdivision, I oppose, and I agree with all my property owners. I'm Lot 20. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Jim Knowles.
How you doing, Mr. Knowles?
Good morning. Y'all having fun yet? Oh, yes, all right. Well, my name is Jim Knowles. Thank you for this opportunity to address the commission. I'm here on behalf of Mitchell Frazier Farms, which farms in the Bell Minna community, and has land immediately adjacent on several sides to the proposed limestone quarry. I'm not opposed to quarries, my client is not opposed to quarries, but there are right places and wrong places to put a quarry. I think you gentlemen know that intuitively, and the district's legislative delegation back in 2009 knew that. Back in 2009, the delegation introduced and passed a series of local laws restricting where limestone quarries could go in this county. Why? Because there are right places and wrong places for quarries. So, what am I talking about specifically? Two laws. First, we have Code of Alabama 45-42-17041, which states, in Limestone County, after May 11th, 2009, no new rock quarry may be established, nor may any existing rock quarry be relocated outside the corporate limits of any municipality within two and a half miles of a public school. Then you have 45-42-170 dot 42, which states, no new rock quarry may be established, nor may any existing rock quarry be relocated within one mile of the TVA industrial mega site. Public school restriction, TVA mega site restriction. From what I understand, none of these restrictions were brought to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management's attention during the current permitting process, which is ongoing right now. Not brought to their attention, even though Auburn University, public institution, public school, Auburn University's Tennessee Valley Research and Extension Center is located within two and a half miles of the proposed quarry, and TVA and state incentivized sites such as Polaris and Mazda Toyota Manufacturing are located within a mile of the proposed quarry. Now, I totally understand that people may disagree as to just what those laws meant with respect to, quote, "public school" or "TVA industrial development mega site", but I think we all agree that those laws did not define those terms in the law. They speak, simply spoke in terms of "public school," "TVA industrial development mega site." And so, we are left to our own reasonable interpretations as to what those laws intended to protect. So, I would say, let's ask ourselves, did those legislators intend to protect public educational assets, like the TVA Research and Extension Center, that are supported by public funds, rather than let such assets be compromised or damaged by a speculative for-profit private enterprise? I would say yes. And did those legislators, may I have your discretion for one more minute, sir?
One minute, go ahead.
Okay. And did those legislators intend to protect job-creating, tax-revenue-generating industries like Mazda, Toyota, that were incentivized through tax breaks and other publicly funded measures to locate in Limestone County, rather than let such assets be compromised or damaged by a speculative for-profit private enterprise? Again, I would say yes. So, what I would respectfully request on behalf of my client is that you seek the guidance of the Attorney General on this matter, as to what these laws mean. I would suggest that you reach out to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management and state that this proposed quarry violates existing law. And when Adam hears "violates existing law," they'll think in terms of the Administrative Procedures Act, and they'll know what that means. Thank you very much for your time today, gentlemen, I sure do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Sam Frazier.
Mr. Frazier? Do y'all want to carry the mic too, Mr. Frazier? Hang on a minute. Just carry the mic to Mr. Frazier.
You're very kind, I appreciate it. I can stand up, it just takes a long time.
I understand.
My name is Sam Frazier, I live directly across the street, across the road from this development. I grew up in this community, I practiced law in Birmingham for 40-something years. Most of what I did was economic development for the city of Birmingham, and other cities and counties around there. So, I have some knowledge of what you're going through. Let's talk about what we've got here. This is not a good deal for you, as a county, any more than it's a good deal for us as the neighbors. I had an expert look at my property, and tell me that it would devalue my property by 30 to 40 percent, I think that's a modest assessment. You think about this for a minute. Nobody wants to live next to a quarry, for all the good reasons you've heard today. So, it's not, it's going to hamper any kind of expansion of residential development. Not going to have factories moving in, especially not a factory that requires painting, because the dust will make that impossible, and the blasting will make it impossible to use their delicate instruments, which have to be calibrated and kept accurate. So, the industry's not coming in. If you don't have residential development or industry, you're sure as heck not going to have commercial development, because there's nothing for it to feed off of. So, this is a bad deal for you gentlemen, it's a bad deal for all of us. Now, how do we solve it? Well, my lawyer, who not, who represents, who said he just represented me, but represents all of us from this community, has shown that there are, in fact, two existing state statutes which prohibit this development. It is true that the state statute in question that applies to the Auburn and A&amp;M joint venture development does not define what a public school is. The statutes that do are not the statutes, so there is no statutory definition of public school in this statute. So, we have to go back to common sense. Here we have a facility where teaching occurs, there are classrooms, students attend classes. There's also an experimentation station which benefits the whole of North Alabama, the whole of the state, and the whole of the country. Delicate instruments that are used to monitor the water table, all of these, and all of it is paid for through the special educational trust fund. If that ain't a school, I don't know what is, and I don't think you'll find a judge who will conclude that that isn't a school. So, you've got the power, you don't have to do anything, you don't have to pass anything else, you just need to enforce the law. The Constitution of Alabama not only gives you the right, but the duty to enforce the law, you are the only authority, the only properly empowered entity in Limestone County who can enforce this law. And we have come to you and said, please do your job, please carry out your constitutional duty and enforce this, and if you don't carry it out, if you don't enforce it, what are we to do? Now, the third thing I want to point out is that this is a unique situation, this community is a unique situation. I grew up in the community, I went to school in Decatur, my parents had businesses and went to church in Decatur and that kind of thing, and I am greatly saddened by the sad stories of racial conflict that are going on in Decatur. I'd like you to join us as Commissioner Gatlin has, at our Tuesday night meetings at the Methodist Church. We fill up that little place, every Thursday night, we're turning out, and you see rich people and poor people, white people and black people, all of whom have one thing in common, they want to protect their homes, and they want to protect their community, and they have a community, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, gentlemen of the commission, they have a community that it is, that all of us, especially in this time after our moral in the country, ought to be proud of and protect. A community that has learned how to live together, and appreciate each other, and support each other, and we'd ask you to treat us as your good, and worthy, and loving constituents, and support us in this fight.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
No further comments?
No further comments. Well, we'll thank everybody for the public comment, and I know that we say this all the time, but you know, if you cannot get a comment in, please email it in to us, or get it to us, and we will be willing to consider the comments. All righty, on the agenda, going to the agenda today, we have, first thing will be the minutes from January the 22nd of 2024. Anybody got a discussion with the minutes today?
No, sir.
All right, the next thing is, we'll have claims in an amount of $4,887,24.25. Anybody got any discussion with that?
That's good. Mr. Chairman, you want to give them a break, just to let them empty the room there, whoever wants to, just take a five minute?
Well, hang on a minute, we can't do, we can't do that, that'd break the rules of procedure.
Yeah, I understand.
That'd break the whole rules of procedure. I guess we'll proceed forward, let everybody exit, and we're still going on with the work session. All right. Do we have any conflicts of interest or anything coming from the commission body today?
No.
All right.
If you don't keep it down, please, I got to continue on.
We've got to continue on with the meeting, and we'll take a break between the meeting here in just a second. All right, public hearings, we have none today. Resolutions and orders, we'll have one resolution in order, and this will be approving a resolution regarding Amendment One on the March 5th, 2024 primary, to be held, this will be held March 5th, 2024, and this is the amendment about the BIR on the laws and the procedures that everybody is aware of. Anybody got any problem with that amendment? I mean, that resolution. All right, contracts, agreements, grants, and MOUs, I'll ask from, well, I mean, we're getting ahead of myself here. We'll approve a contract with Inet Reference Services, and this is for GPS coordinates, and this will be put down at the District Three shop area. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, number two will be to approve a contract with L3 Harris Technologies Incorporated, and this is accordance with the invitation to bid on 2023-01 for P25 radios. Sheriff, if you don't mind, close that door, please, sir. Anybody got a discussion with the L3 Harris and the P25 radio? All righty.
Glad to see it moving on.
Yeah, I am super glad to see it moving forward. All right, number three on here will be to approve a contract with Bryant Moss, we do this every year, Bryant comes in and works part-time specialist as a machine technician and for the upcoming 2024 elections. Anybody got a discussion with Bryant and his little contract on that? All right, we'll have approved to apply for Rebuild Alabama Act Annual Grant Program in the amount of $281,777,500, and this will be county's match of $15,875. And this is for the Sand Springs Road cobbert that we have out, anybody got a discussion with that?
I appreciate you getting that in, Mark. I know you was on a deadline there, and I know you worked hard to accomplish that, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, there was a typo on that, it's $281,750.
Okay.
So, there's just a typo there, just wanted to correct that.
Well, that's why I got carried away with the extra zero. All right. Well, I was curious, I was wondering why I was saying $7,500, but it was there, so I just, I didn't mess up that time.
Don't apologize.
That's fine. Yes, I've made a lot of mistakes in my life, so I mean, it could have been me. All right, number five will be to approve a lease agreement with Cannon Financial Services, and this is for a copier for EMA, anybody got a discussion with that? And this, number six, is approved to enter into an agreement with J.M. Wood's Auction Company, and this will be the auction of the 10 24-model Kenworth T880s, and this is all dump truck, and the number, and then two Kenworth T880 pull tractors, and this obligation is good for March or June auction, and you know, this is the, we do this every time we sell vehicles with them, just to give an agreement, and if we don't have new ones, we won't sell in March, we will sell in June. Anybody got a discussion with that? Budget revisions, have one today, anybody got a discussion with one budget revision? All right, emergency purchase, we have none, board appointments, we have none, award bids and quotes, we have none, personnel action, we have to approve to hire Sarah Whitezell as a corrections officer, this will be effective February the 5th of 2024, pending a drug screen, anybody got a discussion with that? All right, merit increases, we have several listed below, anybody got any issue with any merit increase? All right, engineers report, Mr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do have several subdivisions for your consideration today. One of those I would like to point out, this is the Poplar Creek Cabin Site subdivision, replata Track 25. This one, we did receive some information, kind of after the agenda was printed, but essentially, it's not, the county commission, based off the law, dealing with subdivisions, the county commission, they, it's not, covenants and restrictions aren't taken into consideration for whether or not a subdivision meets the state law and the local law for division of land. But there is an issue, and it has to do with the Lot 13, that is divided amongst all of the other 24 lots. That issue, I've asked legal to take a look at that, because it may affect, that may affect our subdivision regulations, and so, we, the state law does dictate that, that it said that the county commission shall approve a subdivision if it meets the regulation, but all that was presented to us was the division of the actual, the actual lot, but the issue with the other lot and the 1/24 ownership of that lot and that division, that could be an issue with our subdivision regulations, so I've asked, I've asked legal to advise me on that, so I would like to pull that from the agenda for today, till we can get that answered, and see how that, how that works with our subdivision regulations. So, like I said, so, I would like to go ahead and pull that, and then we will, I'll get counsel on that, and so that we can determine how to move forward, and if any revisions need to be made to the subdivision to make it within compliance of our subdivision regulations. The other subdivisions we have, we have Lakeside Estates subdivision, second addition, replata lots one, two, and block two. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating, affecting three lots in District Four. Barlow subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Four. Angela Marie subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District One. Martin Estates subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District One. The flats at Autumn Woods, Phase One, this is a major for preliminary approval, creating 52 new lots in District Two. And so, that's all we have for your initial consideration with the removal of that Poplar Creek Cabin Site subdivision. We do have another, we need to rescind approval for Franklin Estates subdivision, Phase One. This minor subdivision was given approval on September the 5th, 2023. They have made changes to it, we have not signed- on September the 5th, 2023. Um, they have made changes to it. Um, we have not signed the flat yet, so there, um, so we, so like I said, so we need to rescind that approval. Um, and then, uh, we would grant approval for Poplar Creek Road subdivision. This is a minor, minor for preliminary and final, um, creating four lots in District Three. So, we'd rescind the Franklin Estates, State Subdivision Phase One, and in its place, approve Poplar Creek Road subdivision, um, and creating four lots in District Three. So, do y'all have any questions for me about the, the subdivisions?
With the absence of a homeowners association, my understanding is the other property owner's responsibility to protect covenants and a deed.
That, that is, that is the adv, that is the counsel I have received in the past. So, covenants and restrictions are, um, are enforced by the property owners through civil matters. Um, like I said, so that's why the county commission can't take those in, are up in the decision-making process, because that, those are civil matters. The one, like I said, the one issue is how does this division affect that Lot 13, which was not brought into, uh, brought to our attention, um, when originally submitted. So, we just have to see how, how that, how that works with our subdivision process itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody got anything else from Mark?
Mark, the Martin Estates.
The Martin Estates, I'll be have to talk with the lady, um, and, and discuss that. Um, I wasn't aware of any, any objections at the time, but I, but, um, I do have the plat, and we can discuss that, um, in between the meetings. Um, the National Flood Insurance Program, like I said, you guys know that, um, that there's been a lot of work going on. Um, there's been a lot of things that were originally submitted to the county that, um, we were, um, all in opposition to. Uh, we, um, and a lot of counties within the state of Alabama have been in opposition to it. Um, and so, we have, uh, worked and negotiated to try to adjust those, um, those regulations. Um, but, I mean, I, I haven't hidden the fact that, that, um, yes, any development within, uh, Limestone County would have to be reviewed, whether or not it's in a flood plain, um, based off of this regulation. That is something that, that FEMA and, uh, and Office of Water Resources has not budgeted on. In fact, the Code of Federal Regulations, um, requires that if we're to be in, uh, the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, so, like I said, that is, um, that, that is an issue that we, we have not been able to resolve. So, um, like I said, so I, I have, um, sent you guys the, the draft. I've sent the draft to Office of Water Resources so that they can see that we're working to be in compliance. Um, but, um, but like I said, we, it, it's not only agenda today, but, um, as soon as we get word back, that's something that, that we'll, we'll have to discuss. Um, and we'll, we'll, we'll advertise it. We'll put it on the website so that people will have an opportunity to review, um, and take a look at it. Um, but, uh, but anyway, that, there, there are some regulations that the, that the federal government through the National Flood Insurance Program and the Code of Federal Regulations has put on, on us if we're going to be in that program. But anyway, uh, do you have any other questions for me?
Could, could people who have, currently have insurance, could their insurance be canceled if we did not?
If they have flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program, then, um, then their policies will not be renewed. There're twenty, there's twenty-four-point-seven million dollars worth of policies in Limestone County that are currently active. Um, and those policies will not be renewed if, if we don't, if we don't comply with their regulation.
Um, moving forward, um, do we have anybody else, anything else from Mark? Uh, the, um, we, we, so we will approve the subdivision list for striking the one from the Modern Drive area down there. All right. So, it will be struck off, but we will approve the rest of them, and then the one that he, anybody else got anything from Mark before we move on? All right. Other business, um, we have to approve the seek financing for the following, which is five T480 twenty-eight yard garbage trucks, um, one T480 twenty-two yard garbage truck, um, ten Kenworth T880 dump trucks, and two, um, Kenworth T880 lowboy tractors. And this is a, um, we, uh, reach out for this every year, you know, to seek financing for the new trucks that we will, we will pay off the other loan when we sell the other trucks. All right. We have no executive session. We will recess for about fifteen minutes, and that'll put us right back here. What, I skipped? Oh, wait a minute. Hang on a minute. Wait a minute. Hang on a minute. I skipped one. Got carried away. Number two, we have, um, approve and to instruct our county attorney to request an opinion from the Attorney General's office regarding the local laws and pertaining to the rock quarry. So, this will be for us to reach out to get an opinion on this, and that's where I think that's the best advice, and that's the legal advice that we're going to do. So, so he will be seeking out to, to the Attorney General's office on all of these laws. So, anybody got any questions about that or any comment about that? All right. No executive session, and we'll take a break. We'll be back here at 10:30.